Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for this special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD, which is being held July 29, 2020, and the time is 5:30 PM. This meeting will be held by teleconference. The teleconference audio can be accessed at the following toll-free number, 1-877-309-2073, using the access code 926060029, and through an audio feed located on our YouTube channel. Any member of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item can send the comments to the following email address, board-questions@sisd.net. On March 16, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Number one, although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum and attendance at this meeting by telephone call and internet access. Number two, we are meeting by use of both telephone conference call, online access, and through use of an email link for questions. Number three, if a member of the public submitted written comments in advance, the board president or a member of the administration will read the comments into record before or during the board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. Number four, all other meeting procedures will be adhered to the board adopted procedures to the extent practical. Number five, an audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. Number six, we apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. And number seven, if you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787. And now I will do a roll call to ensure that we have a quorum. Mr. Morales?
Here, President.
Mr. Geta?
President.
Mr. Ganda?
Here.
Mr. Garcia? Is Mr. Garcia connected or not? Okay, I believe he is on phone, but he may be having trouble with the audio. Uh, Mr. Mina?
Yeah.
Here.
Okay, and we do have a quorum, and we will continue with our agenda to item number two. The Pledge of Allegiance is being led tonight by Kelly McBane. If you'll all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McBane. And we will begin with item number three, District Reports, A, COVID-19 Employee Guidelines and Procedures. Mr. Campoya?
Good evening, President. I had a Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer, and tonight I'll be presenting to you all the guidelines and procedures that Socorro ISD has implemented to ensure that employees are kept safe when they return back to work, and of course, some of them have already returned to work. Your, on your packet, I believe yesterday, you should have received my presentation, and it's basically a copy of the Guidelines and Procedures Reference Manual. Towards the end, you also have some additional information, so I'll be going over this presentation or this handbook, and you can stop me if you all have questions. This handbook was created in collaboration with the HR team cabinet and also following local, state, and federal guidelines. It is fluid. If you all noticed, there is an update that already occurred. We created this reference manual towards the latter part of June. We distributed this manual to all employees via email and an online link on July 1, 2020. So as of July 24, there was already one update, and we received notice from the local Department of Public Health with additional information that we also need to implement very few changes. Those will be effective August 4. So just wanted to make that statement, just so that you all are aware that, you know, two weeks from now, three weeks from now, this manual may have some additional changes as we continue to receive updates. So it was, I have numbered the pages of the presentation on the center of the handout that you all received yesterday, so that's, those are the pages that I'll be referring to, because it does include some additional forms towards the end. Page three are basically the table of content. Page four is the message to the employee. I'm not going to read over that, but you know, he is letting employees know, you know, information about reopening the school district after the COVID-19. On page five, you have the introduction, and then we included phases and timeline for the opening of the school district and what occurred since March 16. So phase one, March 16 through May 25, of course, we were closed down. However, the district continued functioning in the background. May 26, we decided to bring employees back, and of course, those are employees that are essential and that should remain working during the month of, latter part of month of May and June, and then July. On July 6, we also came back to work after the summer week that we had off. And then phase four, if you notice on your handout, which is on page five, we made a change. It, we were planning on starting phase four July 20. Unfortunately, due to several developments that have occurred lately and guidelines that we received, we changed that date to August 3, and basically, the paragraphs to follow state that that's when our teachers and other professional staff at the campus returned to work. Phase five is August 17, and that's when we're planning to start remote learning, remote teaching for our, or instruction for our teachers. September 14, that is the fourth week period that the city has implemented for, and actually not the city, but TEA, for us to have remote teachings first four weeks. However, there is a possibility of the school district continuing the additional four weeks of remote learning, which would cover us all the way until approximately October 19, which is the day after the first, the first intercession on our calendar. Now, below page six, or in the bottom of page six, we have the hours of operation. Starting or beginning on Monday, we will be opening up the District Service Center from 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Schools or campuses will range from 7:15 to 4:30 PM, and of course, there'll be essential staff at the campuses only, and if teachers want to go in, some teachers may go in. My understanding is the staff development or professional development may be done online as well. Now, towards the bottom of that page, you have the employee check-in and check-out. So that is for employees that are on the time clock. They are required to continue clocking it. Page seven, we have the employee safety and health, and basically, it's just giving employees information regarding the COVID-19. Then we have the transmission of COVID-19, and a lot of this information, of course, we gather from the Department of Health. We also have, we're providing employees information as to the symptoms of COVID-19, what each campus leader and department leader is required to do, which is monitor the safety protocol and procedures. And then towards the bottom, we also have implemented enhanced cleaning, which Mr. Ientin's team has trained our custodians to continue cleaning and sanitizing campuses and departments. Page eight is providing employees with a little graph, a little chart that tells them to stop the spread of germs by maintaining the six-feet social distancing, covering their, their face, washing their hands, and so forth. Page nine, we continue explaining to employees the importance of social distancing, and we also have a little graphic there for them. And then on the bottom, we know we continue explaining to them the importance of making sure that they are at least six feet apart, which is about two arms length from other people. Page 10, and I'm trying to go a little fast, because there is a total of 34 pages, I believe. Page 10 is talking more about face masks and, you know, what the expectation is for the school district, and then at the bottom, we also included... I'm sorry. Okay. So at the bottom of page 10, we just added the, what is a face mask, and it continues on to page 11 with targeting on personal face mask and how they need to be worn, how to put on and remove a face mask. Towards the bottom of page 11, we have the handwashing and asking employees that they must hand wash for at least 20 seconds if they are using hand sanitizer. We're requiring that they have at least 60% of alcohol in them, as it is required by the CDC. Page 12 is about the gloves, and you know, we provide employees, some employees feel safe with gloves, some don't, but we do tell employees about how to put on gloves that are disposable and how to take them off. Page 13, we do have a guide again with removing and disposing of the gloves, the do's and don'ts as well, because a lot of employees don't realize that, you know, they wear gloves and they touch their face with a glove, not knowing that the glove is contaminated. Main lobby, you know, this is where we try to, you know, encourage our campuses, our departments not to have employees or any visitor loitering or congregating in the lobby areas. We are recommending and highly encouraging that any visitors to campuses, to departments, be scheduled, so only by appointment. The same thing with any, any visitors that go into the campus or department, we're encouraging them to schedule appointments. And then, of course, on page 14, we talk about the elevators, a lot of our, not a lot, but some of our campuses do have elevators, including the central office, so we could provide information about elevator, you know, point information, like if you touch the buttons, you make sure you wash your hand afterwards, and there's only two people that fit in the elevator with a six-feet social distance, make sure that only two people load the elevator. Page 15, we touch a little bit on restrooms, stairwells, meals and break rooms, you know, and we continue to update employees, even though this Guidelines and Procedures Reference Manual is online, we continue to update our employees through email, Dr. Espinoza's emails to the employees, or if not, the Department of HR, sending frequent emails to employees to remind them the importance of maintaining that six-feet social distance, especially when they're eating lunch, and we ask them to always stay six feet, if not more, because when they're eating lunch, they're not covering their face. Workstations and cubicles, we do ask employees to maintain a clean workstation. We are providing employees with PPEs, a personal, I forget the actual terminology, but the perfect, personal protective equipment, which includes the sanitizing wipes, includes, you know, disposable face mask and gloves, and in some campuses, some departments, they also provide the employees with sanitizing solution or gel. On page 16, we talk a little bit about supply rooms, copy rooms, and shared equipment, and the expectation for employees. Then, social activities at this time during this pandemic, we are asking that everybody cancel any type of social activity, potlucks, celebrations of any kind, and so forth. Page 17, we have the employee self-screening, and that's where we ask every supervisor to ensure that every employee that is coming into work is doing their self-check, which includes checking their temperature, also asking them questions either on a paper that's there in the front lobby. Some campuses have created an app, or if not, a, something online that the employee can answer questions to. The Department of HR is working on possibly creating a generic, or if not, uniform type of app that every campus can use, so that's still in development and planning right now, working with our technology departments, so we can create something for all campuses. But for now, some campuses are doing it in different forms. Every campus is provided with a temperature check thermometer that is contactless. That way, they are able to have their employees take their temperature, some campuses even ask employees to take their temperature at home before they go in to work. Page 18, we just continue referring to the guidelines if somebody were to be ill at the campus, what to do if, you know, they do find out that somebody has either symptoms or maybe a confirmed case. So we provide guidelines to the employees as to what to do, mainly calling the Department of HR and our health clinic. That way, they can provide them guidance as to the next steps if the employee is experiencing those symptoms. Towards the bottom of page 18, we talk about the parking, and a lot of people don't realize, but you know, even at parking lots, we try to maintain the six-feet social distance, so we provide guidance to employees so that they can try to make sure as soon as they will get off their vehicle, they are covering their, their face, and if there is a space of parking in between vehicles to try to park on the other space, so, which a lot of our campuses probably won't have that availability because of the space of the parking spa, a lot, but we still encourage employees to try to do that. Page 19, that's more of the contact tracing, what happens when an employee, a student, or a visitor reports a positive COVID case, or if not, a presumed positive COVID case. So we do ask that they notify the employee health clinic and absence management in HR. So we provided those numbers, and like I mentioned earlier, we continue sending emails to staff very frequently, if not every other week, every week, to just to make sure that they understand the importance of reporting this. We're also encouraging the employees at campuses to report that case to the nurse. Our principals have done an amazing job since March that we closed down, and Ms. Macias working closely with them of reporting cases. Effective June 3, we took over in HR for the contact tracing, and we continue doing the same thing, and our principals are amazing, reporting all the cases to us. The boxes on the bottom of that page or towards the center part just explain to employees what we would do as soon as there is a COVID-19 positive reported to us. Page 20, return to work guidelines. We provide employees with the information as to what is required if they are tested positive and they go out on self-quarantine, or if not, you know, it's a presumed case, and we still require that they self-quarantine, then we provide them with information. A lot of these documents have 14 days. We just got notice that it changed to 10 days. However, it's 10 business days, so it's equivalent to 14 days if we include two weekends in the 10-day period. Page 21, these are the, what employees need to know about the contact tracing. This is directly coming from CDC to word by word, basically, so we just provided that to employees so they can have it readily available. It's more like a Q and A. Page 22, we provide employees with employee support and phone numbers, so they have the phone number for Cigna, they have a phone number for HR, we have three different phone numbers, we have the email address, we also have the Employee Assistance Program, and continuing on to page 23, we have other information there as well. Then in this handbook, we added two appendices. Right now, we had the guidelines for sanitizing technology devices, which is appendix A, and it's on your page 24. And then, page 25, we provided employees with the dress code directive. A lot of employees were calling and questioning is, are we going to be allowed to be wearing jeans, so we provided them with, you know, the, the dress code guidelines as well, so that they know. On page 27, 28, I'm sorry, that's when, that's where I included the forms that we include or that we use in HR, and it's similar to what was being used by the campuses before. We just put it in a form, so that's the report by either the campus, or if not, the employee filling out and giving it to the campus principal or to the department supervisor, and then they provide it to us. So I won't go over the form, it's two pages, so it covers, it's covered on page 28 and page 29 of your, your handout. Page 30 is the request for EFML, and EFML is the Expanded Family Medical Leave, so that is a form that we use, but, and it has there the six reasons that are allowed, and this is by the federal government, so if you page to, if we turn to page 31, that is the employee rights. And I have provided this on a board communicate a few weeks back to the board. This is coming directly from the Department of Labor. So basically, what it allows employees to do is to be out if they qualify, and in the box that you see there towards the bottom center of the page, there are six reasons. So employees qualify if they have any of those six reasons. For example, number two, if I go to the doctor because I have sore throat and I have a temperature of 101, and the doctor tells me, you know what, you need to self-quarantine because you have the symptoms, and I recommend that you get tested, during that time, I can, more than likely, I'm going to be placed at home, and the Department of HR will provide me with the form to fill out, so I can qualify for expanded family medical leave, which will allow me to get paid for 10 days without using my personal days. So that will be, that is available to any employee that has been employed by the district for over 30 days. Now, that is only once, available to employees only once from now until December. The Department of Labor has not changed that guideline, it's still in effect. However, if we have employees that have had the COVID-19 twice, the second time that they tried to apply, we would place them on family medical leave, and they will be using their personal days. So the, the employee rights, expanded family medical leave is only available once to the employee. Now, on page 32, that is just to provide, this is a form that is internal in HR, and we include it for the employees, which provides employees the information, and we ask them to initial beside each of the line items that are included there. Now, page 33, even though an employee may be experiencing symptoms, a lot of times, the employee is willing to work from home. So instead of being out using the 10 days that the federal government allows them to use, a lot of our employees, and I say a lot because I'm going by the number of employees that have requested to, to try to work from home, and I believe it's around 86 so far. So we have this form on page 33, which is a request to temporarily work from home due to COVID-19. We are using the six same reasons for expanded family, family medical leave, so that way the employee can, you know, apply to work from home, and they continue using their, getting paid and continuing to work on their regular job duties from home. Now, this is only available to employees that can perform their regular job duties at 100% from home. For example, if a bus driver or a custodian were to apply, they would not qualify, so we immediately disqualify them. Why? Because they cannot perform their regular job duties or the job functions of their job from home. And page 34 is the second page of that document. We have formed a committee that reviews all the requests once a week, and the committee will determine if the employee is allowed to work from home or not. The Department of HR keeps record of that, and we provide the employee with a communication if they were approved or if they were not, and then we also communicate to the campus principal or department supervisor. At this time, that concludes the information that I provided you in my presentation, but at this time, I know there may be a lot of questions, and I do have all my team online, so if I don't have the answer to one of your questions, one of my team members will be available. I also have the clinic manager, Kelly Moreno, online for any medical questions as well.
President, I have this Paul Garcia, can you hear me clear?
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Rudy, thank you so much. A very thorough presentation, very, very thorough and detailed. I specifically like the way you were able to identify the, the regulations that are coming down from the federal, from the state. I think that's good for the listeners and for the public to know, you know, there's certain things that we have control over and there's some certain things we don't. So thank you very much, thank you and your team, I appreciate it, sir. I do have one question here, real quick. If a family member tests positive, does the employee get quarantined for those 10 days?
And I'll go ahead and refer to Mr. Carmona and Ms. Moreno, they're the ones that are doing the contact tracing, so I don't want to mess that answer up, so I'll let them answer.
Good evening, this is Ms. Moreno. Sir, it is very dependent on multiple circumstances. If the, the individuals are able to quarantine at home versus unable to quarantine at home, and different things like that, once the report is made to us, we will assess the situation and decide at that time if testing is required or quarantining, it just, it'll depend after our assessment.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions?
President, I have, this is Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
On, now Rudy, I know you were saying that you, that, that we were working on possibly an app that would be able to ask those, the, the screening questions, the health questions, and those kinds of things. Any idea, because, you know, I, as, as Mr. Garcia asked, you know, if, if anybody's been exposed or come into contact, I mean, those questions are listed on page 17, and I think it would be, you know, an easier step if, if that was already, if there was a way to answer those questions ahead of time. Any idea, and, and like I said, I know you, you said the district was working on that app, any idea when the rollout, possibly, maybe?
Right now, unfortunately, one, one of our programmers who was working with it couldn't continue for the next couple of weeks, so we're working with technology, otherwise, we're looking at other avenues as well. I know that today I was doing some research, other districts are all scrambling for something as well, and I do subscribe to the taskable email group, and I can't remember if it was a lead for another, they created an app with cognitive forms, so I was going to get with Hector and his team this week, but I don't have, I don't want to tell you two weeks from now and then find out that it takes longer, we're trying to even get it sooner if we can. We're trying to even get it sooner if we can. However, I did reach out to a few campuses, I know Bill Seibert, I know Ma Wood Middle School. And there's another campus, they created one with Microsoft forms and the teachers. And the employees can go into their phone and, and already answer those questions and the principal gets the responses. However, what we are.
This is Liz Rios and I'm with Technology Services. And I just wanted to kind of bring you all up into, uh, to speed on what the situation is, we are currently working on it. And we are working with Mario and Ms. Macias to get it um, complete. So we can give you an update um.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, this is Maribel Macias, I believe we, we lost Mr. Dios. Um, yes, uh, IT is amazing, they've been working and developing an app and it'll be for employees and it'll be for students. Um, hopefully, within a couple of weeks, we'll be able to have a rollout so that we could share that with our employees. All those questions are the ones that we use during our wellness, our daily wellness protocols. So that was already established, those questions are being asked on a daily basis, unfortunately, we were doing it paper pencil. But now, we're gonna have the app that on a daily basis, before anybody comes on campus or onsite, they will complete the survey. If they do respond that they do have uh, COVID concerns, yes, I have uh, COVID symptoms or I was in close contact. At that point, that information will go directly to HR if it's an employee. Or it'll go directly to our nurses, um, campus administration if it's a student. And from there, we would start the contact tracing. So a big thank you to Mr. Reyna and his technology team, we should be able to have that rolling out soon and have that information available for Team SIST.
That's awesome, thank you all so much for, for your hard work on this. I think anything, and, and again, you know, um. Using paper pencil, that's just more um. More stuff that we can bring into the campuses, so anything that can be done online, I think is an amazing, um, amazing job, thank you all so much for. And, and I echo what Mr. Garcia said, you know, thank you all so much for, for your hard work on this. Um, obviously, a lot of it, a lot of time and, and effort has been put in, so. I appreciate that and, and everything that, that you all are doing to try to keep our employees safe and, and our students safe as well, so thank you again.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, then if not, thank you, Mr. Campoya and your entire team for all of your work, we truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will move on to item three B, financial update and current physical impact of COVID nineteen, Mr. Ressa.
Yes, uh, is it Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, I am Tony Desa, Chief Financial Officer for the district. I will be presenting to you a financial update for fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-twenty, as well as the COVID nineteen fiscal impact on the district. Uh, you have a presentation that was submitted to you, uh, they are numbered. If you turn to slide number one, it says fiscal impacts of fiscal year nineteen-twenty. What I'd like to do is kind of present to you some of the highlights of the fiscal year that just ended. Uh, first of all, our average daily attendance did go up by one point two nine percent over the prior year. I think that's attributed to Dr. Espinoza's vision and recommendation to the board to. Have open enrollment for the school district, because in prior years, our ADA hadn't gone up more than point nine five percent. Also note that TA did allow school districts to use their first four-six weeks period to cover funding purposes. And so that one point two nine percent pertains to that period. Uh, Socorro ISD also received over nine million dollars in CARES funding to assist with the district closure. However, later on, TA did announce that the foundation's school program would be reduced uh, by the CARES funding amount. And they did that by offsetting the fifth and sixth weeks ADA. And reducing that ADA to reduce the nine million dollars that we're receiving uh, from CARES. So in so doing, our ADA actually grew by one point zero six percent and we made that adjustment. Also, for twenty, we, uh, twenty-twenty, we did transfer out nine million dollars from the general fund into the healthcare fund. To solidify and, and, and support the, the fund. And we also transferred six point eight million dollars from the general fund to the two thousand and ten bond program for the completion of Socorro, I'm sorry, Sergeant Carrasco Elementary School. So through uh, Mr. Arlington's efficient stewardship of the bond program, we had about twenty-five million dollars left over in savings. And so the board did deem that to use that for the completion of an additional elementary school, which turned out to be Carrasco Elementary School. With the understanding that we probably didn't have enough money to complete the elementary school, and that's why we're making that transfer out to close out the bond program. Also, keep in mind that we're using CARES funding for the acquisition of laptops. And during the year, uh, the district did pay staff during the district closure for the common good and to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. So let's look at the projected uh, status of the general fund for twenty-twenty, if you turn to slide number two, please. As you can see, our projected revenues are four hundred and twenty-four point seven million dollars. That's with the reduction of the COVID, uh, I'm sorry, of the CARES allocation. And our expenditures were projecting to be four hundred and nine point five million dollars. Please keep in mind that these are projections, we're still paying bills, we're still tabulating uh, amounts, we're still looking at revenues, some like indirect costs for federal programs. Those are usually closed out in August and then from there, uh, we, we, we collect indirect costs as a revenue. Uh, so I also realize that, and I know you know that, that certainly with the closure, a lot of activities kind of came to a stop. And so extending kind of came to a stop. Or things that were ordered, because it ordered from China, it didn't get here in time for the fiscal year to end, when it ends, which was June the thirtieth, so. Because of that, we had a, a projected excess of about fifty million dollars, however. We did transfer out the items that we've talked about, nine million dollars for the healthcare fund, six point eight million dollars to uh, close out the bond program. And there was a transfer in of about two hundred, two point four million dollars for uh, the lease purchase of the incoming freshman class laptops. So at this current time, we're looking at a net surplus of about two point five million dollars. But please keep in mind, again, this is uh, preliminary. Because there's other programs that we're looking at for reimbursement because of the closure. For example, TA has created a fund called the COVID uh, Relief Fund, which reimburses school districts for any expenses having to do with the closure. From March through May, and so we're gonna be looking at that to see if perhaps we can get reimbursed for that. We've also looked at, we're looking at getting reimbursed from FEMA. Also, TA has allocated about two hundred million dollars to reimburse school districts for connectivity and for, for, for computers, so. Because of that, TA is allowing school district to ask for a waiver with respect to the completion of the audit. And to push back the, the, the timeline for the audit, and that's something we're seriously considering, so. Most likely around September, October, we'll be coming back to the board asking for your approval. For a waiver to submit the audit a little bit later than usual, so just keep that in mind. Uh, if you go to slide number three. You'll see that we receive state funding for special programs, whether it be career technology education, whether it be special education. Or state compensatory education. And we're required to spend a certain percentage of that, usually it's either fifty-five percent or a hundred percent. And so for the first time since two thousand and nine, uh, we didn't meet several of those program expenditure requirements, as you can see, with the closure. Um, things didn't get spent, or we did have things in motion, but they didn't come to fruition, so. These are expenditures that are required to be spent, if they're not spent, then the shortfall is then added to next year's allotment and you have three years to spend it. Uh, what I do wanna point out with the early educational allotment, you were ordering furniture, we did order two point six billion dollars of iPads that were gonna be charged to the program. But because they're not received by the end of June, we have to carry that over. Uh, so at this point in time, we don't know if TA is going to waive the expenditure requirement because of the uh, extraordinary circumstances that impacted our fiscal year this year. We're gonna be looking at that, uh, it's just something that, that uh, we need to let you know about. So if you go to slide number four, uh, just some history on how we move forward with. Providing the funding for PPE as well as for the COVID uh, closure. So in March, uh, March twenty-twenty, the state of emergency was declared by the governor. In that month, uh, Socorro ISD uh, set up COVID expenditure accounts, working with Ms. Maribel's uh, department, working with Dr. Castro. Working with other, the departments, we kind of set up some, some COVID accounts, so we can start tracking our expenses. So for the purpose of getting reimbursed, hopefully in the future, from FEMA. At the same time, we had allocated a main PPE account, so that we can provide personal protective equipment for campuses and departments. And as well as for, for whatever was, was ordered from, 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 uh, from the departments and the campuses. As well as what's being received by, by TA, now keep in mind is that we did a lot of ordering uh, for PPE. And then later on, TA announced that they had, they were sending us PPE, so. But it's, it's, it's always good to make sure you had enough for, for what's needed. So currently, we budgeted in that main account about one point five million dollars for the purpose, purpose of purchasing PPE for campuses and departments, but. Uh, campuses and departments uh, are allowed to supplement that allocation, so. Uh, we have uh, provided the, the schools and departments to, uh, through Ms. Macias, uh, she's doing a great job in, in directing and providing this information. Uh, what they're gonna be getting, uh, the allocation will be going out, I think, on, the majority of the allocation will be going out, I think, starting on Monday. Uh, but just keep in mind that it's, it's a, it's an ongoing process, so the remaining budgets and encumbrances that we incurred in twenty-twenty will be rolled over into twenty-twenty-one. As we move forward and as things change. So if you look at slide number five, um, you'll see uh, with respect currently, what we have with respect to actual expenses and encumbrances. For the PPE, we bought, we bought nine hundred and eight thousand dollars in either expenses or encumbrances for masks, gloves. Face shields, thermometers, spray bottles, safety goggles, gowns, electrostatic sprayers, hand sanitizers, these are one gallon containers and disinfectant wipes. We're also done initial order for student barriers and Plexiglas, we're still revising that and looking at another order for those things. Uh, as well as special education student barriers for kidney tables. So at this point in time, total PP is one point uh, two million dollars, but it's gonna go up. And as you can see, you're also seeing the items that have been provided to us from, from TA. You're looking at about four hundred and twenty-two thousand disposable masks, uh, certainly reusable mask for child. Face shields, thermometers, gloves and hand sanitizer, so you'll see the hand sanitizers are giving us almost five thousand uh, gallons. We ordered five thousand gallons on top of that, uh, so um, as we move forward, we'll see what the need is with those particular items. On page six, which you'll see is the technology devices that we've ordered to make sure that we have. Um, so virtual learning and working with Mr. Reyna's staff, uh, they're doing a great job in providing what's needed, also working with the other departments. Uh, so we're looking at about twelve million, twelve million, about one hundred thousand dollars in what's been ordered either through general fund, whether it be the early education allotment. Or uh, the CARES funding, uh, as well as hotspots, now this doesn't include. The islands, uh, maybe some technologies being ordered by the schools through their Title One funds. But the purpose here is to ensure that we have a, a device for every student in our school district. And then, so it's important to keep in mind that with respect to the CARES funding, these are gonna be outright purchases of technology equipment. And the reason for that is we wanna have a financial bridge to get us past the next biennium, because we know that we're gonna have. Most likely, some very tough times going through the next biennium, so wanna be able to get that, so. We don't usually have to worry about the laptops while we're going through the next two years. Uh, and so if you look at page number seven, you'll see our unemployment claims. Uh, you see that for, in total, for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, we had fifty-six thousand seven hundred unemployment claims. In two thousand and nineteen, we had seventy-one thousand dollars in total. This year, we had a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars and it's, a majority of it is for that last quarter from March through June, it was a hundred and one thousand dollars, which was more than. The, the total quarter, the four quarters for the last two years. And certainly, you have a lot of employees who are fighting for unemployment, so forth, and so. Uh, that expense is there, it might continue into the next quarter, probably through the fall. So if we go to page number eight, just wanna talk to you about some changes in state funding for twenty-twenty-one. TA will allow school districts to earn funding for virtual education using either synchronous or the asynchronous methods of tracking attendance. Uh, SIST will be using the asynchronous method because it generates. Not only the most revenue, but certainly allows us to be work with students. Uh, however, TA, and, and also TA will hold harmless school districts for the first twelve weeks of school. In other words, and, and they've already established an average daily attendance floor for, for the various special programs and a refined ADA. So what they're saying is that if our ADA for the first twelve weeks is lower than these amounts. And they will be using these amounts in conjunction with the remaining twenty-four weeks to average our average daily attendance for the year. However, they have put a caveat, they, they've stated that the average daily attendance for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Cannot exceed the average daily attendance percentage established in twenty-nineteen. So for us, that's approximately about ninety-two point four percent, so they've established a cap, I think, because they, they, they think there's a possibility that. Using probably asynchronous method, the average daily attendance might be higher than under a normal year, I don't know. But that's the cap, so it's something that we just have to keep in mind as we're moving forward. Uh, with respect to page number nine, you'll see that COVID is having an impact, not only currently and for this fiscal year. But it's gonna have an impact for future years. And you see some of the headlines that what the state is doing with respect to the impact on the economy because of the closure and the recession that we're in, so. So certainly, uh, the state agencies have, uh, the governor has instructed state agencies to turn their budgets by five percent. And then also, the analysis that state is right now in a state of financial uncertainty. And so what I've provided to you in the next page, page ten, is a certainly a. A handout that was completed by the comptroller's office in what you see is a certified revenue estimates. In October of two thousand, two thousand and nineteen, and you see the various segments of revenue. Total amount of revenues that we're projecting was a hundred and twenty-one point seven-six billion dollars. So in July, this past, this current month, uh, there was revised downward, two hundred and ten point nineteen billion dollars, so. And then what they're projecting for the end of the biennium is that we'll have a shortfall of five point eight billion dollars. So uh, it shows the significant financial impact that the COVID nineteen has had on our economy on the state. And what's gonna happen in the future. So if you turn to page eleven, uh, it's just really stating what I've already, uh, what I, what you see in the graph. But what I do wanna state is that the projected four point six billion dollars, uh, you'll see a shortfall of eleven billion dollars in revenue. But there's only a projected shortfall in a four point six for the whole biennium, and that's because. They did use about three point four billion dollars, from what I understand, in CARES funding to kind of. Surplant and, and supplement the budget for the state, they had less than projected average daily attendance at the schools. As well as higher property valuations and tax year nineteen, that, and certainly kind of resulted in that lower than. You know, eleven billion dollar uh, shortfall that's being projected for the end of the biennium. And they do project that the rainy day fund will have an ending balance of eight point eight billion dollars. But it's important to keep in mind what the, the comptroller Glenn Hager stated, and that was. It's important to remember that the revised estimate carries unprecedented uncertainty moving forward. So it's, it's gonna be something that's gonna impact this going forward for the next several years. Uh, and not just this year and not just the beginning of the school year. So on page twelve, I thought it was important to kind of provide the board uh, some historical information from the last recession. Now, you know, history doesn't always, but sometimes it repeats itself, and so it's important to kind of see what happened back then, so in two thousand and eight, nine, there was an economic recession. So the following biennium, the biennium, the two thousand and ten, eleven biennium. The, the state of Texas did receive about six billion dollars in Arona State Fiscal Stabilization Fund, so they, they received federal assistance. Of which Socorro ISD received eleven point seven million dollars per year for that biennium. And it's my understanding that toward the latter part of that biennium, the state did use rainy day funds to kind of help them get through. The biennium and help them finish that period. However, for two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, the state of Texas received no federal assistance whatsoever, and they projected about a twenty-seven billion dollar shortfall. About thirteen point five billion per year. So it's important to keep this in mind, so the, the comptroller kind of certifies uh, the revenue estimates in January. Uh, of, 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 of that fiscal year, uh, so. So after the start of, of the session, uh, around January, you get the projections, but ordinarily, and if memory serves back then, around November, December. we'll start hearing unofficial estimates of what the shortfall is going to be. Kind of gives us a little bit of an idea of what we're looking at facing. But let's keep in mind is that these estimates are estimates. I mean, and what the comptroller is communicating, I feel, is that, look, this is going to be a lot more different than what would happen back in 2008, 2009. Who knows? But we'll see. So when that happened, Texas cut $5.3 billion from public education. And my understanding is they didn't tap the rainy day fund. So in that time, we lost about $15.5 million or 5% in 2012 and $22.5 billion, so 7.5% in 2013. And that's because what the state of Texas did is they cut $4 billion from the foundation school program, another $1.3 billion from programs outside the foundation school program. So who knows what's going to happen, but it's something that we have to keep in mind moving forward because it will impact us. So on page 13, some considerations with the new biennium and as we get closer to it, is considerations. Will Congress provide federal funding to alleviate this shortfall in revenue estimates like what happened back in 2011, '12? Let's hope, because that will certainly help us. Also, the legislature has accounting gimmicks that they use to kind of get through any kind of tough times. And one of their favorites is to push off the August payment to school districts into the next biennium. So we'll see if they push off the August 2023 payment to school districts into September to see if they can reduce the shortfall. And let's see if they're going to tap into the rainy day fund. You know, it's something to consider. So that's my report. Are there any questions that the board members have with respect to this presentation? I have my staff available as well as maybe.
Mr. Nagara.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gandera.
Mr. Sess, I brought this up the last time that we talked at our last meeting. You know, my concerns were the future of our school district and what was going to happen with everything that was going on, all the costs that we're incurring now. And the future of our district, you know, not knowing what the state or the federal government was going to do. I mean, I appreciate and thank you for this this great job that you just did on informing us. But at the end of the day, we're still not sure what's going to happen if I'm correct, right?
Yes, sir, you're correct. Just like the comptroller stated, there's a period of uncertainty for everybody.
And so in that case, we might not know or not sure when this will happen. So for all we know, the next two to three years can be an unknown of how it's going to affect our revenue, correct?
Yes, sir. We should start getting an idea around, I would think, December, January of what the possible impact would be in our revenue for the next few years. But we'll see.
Okay. And that was one of my, that was my main concern was, you know, I don't, you know, I wanted to start planning and then hopefully, and the rest of the board members, I can feel as well. I mean, I hope everybody feels as well that we need to start planning and start and put something into effect where we're being yeah, always proactive and making sure that we take care of all our employees and our students and making sure that we keep this district in the black and not in the red. And I think that's the big problem right now is that we're afraid that we might end up in the red and we're going to have to cut some of these, nothing that we are, but it could happen. And I'm thinking that we need to start looking into methods to save money for the district. And like I said, just in case, like again, I'd rather be wrong than right. And have to start cutting things in the future because we decided not to be proactive right now. I think that's something that we need to start looking into. And like again, I'd rather be wrong than right. Because I said, nothing more than I would hate than to start to cutting budgets and jobs and to that effect. Because like again, I don't work in the district, but I live in the district, have family in the district. And like I said, when you're born and raised here, you want to make sure that it's left the same and in the right direction that we've been driving this district. Again, and so I don't, I don't want us to get to that point where we're, as board members, we're there having to make these tough decisions on, oh, well, we have a 15 million deficit this year or 2018 and the following year, we're going to have to start cutting things. And I don't want to get to that point. I mean, some of you, you know, we have some new board members weren't here back when we almost got to that point where we had to almost start cutting things. And we did. I'm glad it wasn't a lot, but you know, we stuck together as a family and we did what we needed to do and we came out of it on top. So again, that's my thought on it. I hope everybody else on the board feels the same. I just think we need to start putting something together now to make sure we stay on that track, on that plan.
Mr. Gandera, I certainly appreciate that concern. I do want to state that in cabinet, we've had some preliminary discussions about possibly setting up a subcommittee to start studying ways to save money and looking if we have any shortfalls. However, we felt, you know what, let's concentrate on the start of school. Let's make sure we get everything situated. And then we can kind of go in that direction. But yes, sir, I think definitely we're going to be looking, once the start of school takes place and so forth, on maybe studying ways to be able to save money as we move forward. And what we pretty much are kind of sure that it's going to be some tough times.
Again, thank you, Mr. I really do appreciate it.
President Nagara, Mr. Man, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Man.
Yes, Tony, on page seven, unemployment claims. Like Mr. then that is it, taking care of our employees. The hourly employees, some of our hourly employees have filed for unemployment claims and have gotten either no response or denial. Can you elaborate on that?
You know, Mr. Man, I'm going to ask if Mr. Carmona or Mr. Campoya can address that question? I don't want to say something that's incorrect.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mider Carmona. Mr. Campoya, if it's okay, I can provide some feedback?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So as you already know, the pandemic has brought over some processes that are not your typical day-in, day-out steps that are followed to include filing an unemployment claim. I know or we know as a department that there's been some instances where employees have filed a claim and some of them have been approved, of course, due to a reduction of hours and others have been because they have been reported as continuing to work with a school district. So what we could possibly do, and I could think of, to be able to further assist those employees is if there's someone who is trying to receive our response because their response will come directly from the Texas Workforce Commission, they can reach out to us and see if we have in fact received a claim and provide them with a status based on the information that we have received. And if they're trying to get a response in terms of what the Texas Workforce Commission has decided on their particular claim, we can guide them in terms of who they can contact and how they can process and appeal.
So Mr. Carmona, right now, we are approving unemployment claims? Is this through the Federal Funding Care Act or how's that working?
That is correct, sir.
As the school district, are we paying for any of that?
Yes, there has been claims that have been approved. And that is, again, if it's being filed due to COVID-19, if that's the reason why it's being filed, the rules and regulations have been somewhat, I guess for lack of a better term, relaxed by the federal government to where the benefit is extended and more people are eligible to actually receive a benefit.
So for reduced hours, they can actually get a supplement? If they're not working right now and say something happens, we don't go back to school? We end up, you know, extending it and extending it for whatever reason it may be, maybe the COVID, you know, heat comes back in fall? Our employees, are they going to qualify for this?
They could possibly qualify, yes. Again, it depends on how the claim is being filed through the Texas Workforce Commission and what information is being submitted to them for them to determine if someone's eligible or not. The school district does not per se qualify someone for an unemployment claim. That will have to come in directly from the commission.
So the key is to how to fill out the claim properly, in other words?
Yes, and sometimes, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, sometimes it's the supporting documentation as well.
This is, Mr. Man, we receive those claims that are filed and sometimes the employee puts there, "I got laid off." So when the Workforce Commission sends us the report, we have to be honest and tell them we did not lay them off. So it has to do something with the way the employee files a claim.
I see, Rudy. Okay. Is there something we can do to maybe educate our employees and how to properly fill out a claim? Because some of our employees are really hurting right now. What can we do, Rudy?
I don't know if Steve Blanco is on the meeting because I don't know if legally we as the employer can do that. I know Texas does that. But I don't know if he can shed some light on that.
Good evening. This is Steve Blanco. And I heard the discussion and the question and Mr. Carmona, Mr. Campoya corrected the initial paperwork is filled out by the employee and they swear that it's truthful and the district will be contacted with the opportunity to respond. And it's the same set of information. We have to provide a truthful response under penalty of perjury now. If an employee provides incorrect information as a reason to try to qualify themselves for the leave, all that the Workforce Commission can do is investigate that. They can follow up, make phone calls to the employee. Occasionally in the past, they would make follow-up requests for information and phone calls to the employer. Frankly, it's my understanding that's not happening that often right now because of the sheer volume of claims. It can take a long time. What employees really need to do when they file those claims is look for all the various reasons. For example, if they are unable to work because of a medical condition, they can qualify for unemployment. But if they don't put the correct information down, we don't know. You'll get an application. You'll say this is the reason provided by the employees, correct or incorrect? If it's incorrect, what's the reason for separation? Or were they even separated from employment? And then the district responds and it's the employee's obligation to follow up on that.
Okay, Rudy, so we are having employees with reduced hours get supplemented income?
I don't know if those are the ones. All I know is some get approved and some don't. And since we in HR don't make that determination, it's the Texas workforce. All we need to do is we receive the claim and we respond. So if, let's say, a bus driver submitted a claim and they say, "Oh, I'm not working in June and July." So what they'll do is they'll submit it to us and we confirm that the employee is not working provide Texas workforce with the work calendar. From that point on, we don't know what Texas workforce does.
Thank you, Rudy.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Campoya? Hey, thank you, Mr. Campoya. We certainly appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Move on with item 4A. But before then, I'm sorry, we do have one letter to be read. Is that going to be read by you, Ms. Macias?
Yes, ma'am, President Nagara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. We do have one email that came in from Mr. Tommy Hill. I know the board heard from six people from transportation on the hardship that this COVID-19 pandemic has had on us and the added burden of the calendar putting our paycheck back two more weeks when most of us could not pay our bills with a regular start-up date. It is very important that this bonus gets approved to be paid out on our August 15 check. We have about 300 employees in transportation and you only heard from six of them with heartfelt letters. But I can guarantee most of us are running out of options on how to pay our bills. I have personally heard of over 50 employees that do not even have money to pay their rent or mortgage to ensure that they have a place to live for them and their family. I know this might be a little inconvenient to rush us the bonus this fast, but I can assure you that I would rather have that inconvenience than to figure out where to move your family during the pandemic. Mr. Tommy Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Macias. We will move on to I'm sorry? 4A, consider approval to change the one-time lump sum payment of $1,000 to be paid in full in the month of August 2020 to all eligible employees.
Motion to approve.
To approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandera and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is that accurate? I kind of lost Ms. Rodriguez's audio. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, my microphone wasn't working.
No worries. Thank you. I have a question by Mr. Gandera and a second by Mr. Man. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I have a quick question. Would it be possible, as far as that concerned, to have a payment done in the middle of August?
Yes, Mr. Morales, we are doing that for the semi-monthly employees. They will get it on August 15th and the monthly employees will get it on August the 31st.
So would that encompass the bus drivers getting that paycheck on the 15th of August?
Yes, sir, that is correct. They are semi-monthly employees.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Any other discussion? And I'll call for the vote. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Ganda?
Aye.
Mr. Gandera?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Man?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. We will move on with item 4B, consider approval of waiver to request to extend the start of the 2020-21 school year transition beyond the four-week. Ms. Macias?
Yes, President Nagara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Administration recommends consideration and approval to apply for the TA waiver to request the extension of the start of the 2021 school year transition period beyond the four-week period that was afforded to us by Governor Abbott and TA, which is August 17th through September 11th. Administration will request an additional four, beyond the initial four weeks for transition. And that would be from September 14th to October 2nd. The Secord Independent District School District will continue to work closely with Dr. Hector Ocaranza Flores, the city and county of El Paso's Health Authority to guide our safe transition to on-campus instruction. The criteria that he initially set is an updated rolling seven-day average positivity rate below 7.5%. It was initially written as a 10%. However, Dr. Espinoza met with him this week on Tuesday and is meeting with him again next week on Tuesday. Kudos to Dr. Espinoza ahead of the game. Other districts were barely asking for this. So what he's going to do, Dr. Ocaranza, is going to review all the data and he's going to provide a unified updated statement to all region ISD or region 19 ISD superintendents. But at this time, he gave us, or he gave Dr. Espinoza a thumbs up. So we are requesting the rolling seven-day average positivity rate to be below 7.5%, a downward trend in the new case daily curve and a daily total of new COVID-19 cases to be less than 25 per 100,000. As of today, actually, if you go to epstrong.org website, the data is there. We're currently at a 9.04% rolling seven-day average positivity rate. If you do the math, we're at about 28 per 100,000. If you do the math, we're at about twenty eight per one hundred thousand daily total of new COVID nineteen cases. And we still have an upward trend in the new cases daily curve. So with that recommendation by administration for approval to submit the additional days, or sorry, four-week waiver to TEA.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? And I'll call for the vote. Mr. Morales?
Hi.
Mr. Geta?
Hi.
Mr. Gondola?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
Mr. Mena?
Hi.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias and Dr. Espinoza and everyone in Team S E who is staying on top of this matter to make sure that we can bring back our students and our staff. We'll continue with item four C, consider approval of TEA maximum class size exemption waiver.
President and I?
Yes, or Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, in regards to the class waiver request, let me begin by saying that I have always been a supporter of low student-teacher ratio, always, since even my days back many, many years ago. As a principal and as, I'll never forget that, as a superintendent, when I came here to SISD, one of the first things I did was to reduce the student-teacher ratio in fifth grade by adding a, an extra teacher position in lieu of a sky coach position. Each campus had, if you recall, had two sky coaches, so I brought it down to one at the, and added an extra teacher. So again, every decision that I make, I always put my old, my old teacher hat on. But right now, these are not normal times. We have many, many safety protocols in place, which Ms. Macias has done and her team has done, Mr. Campoya and the entire team has done an outstanding job of discussing at board meetings and discussing with different stakeholders. However, as a leader of the school district, I'm always thinking about what else, what else can, can we do to protect our students and teachers when they walk back into our buildings and thinking outside the box? Because TEA has requirements that we must follow. I thought of a plan in which we could have teachers, for example, team teach in order to allow teachers who come in to teach in the buildings to only have ten or eleven students. That means that teachers who, who don't qualify to stay at home could buddy up with another teacher or teachers and teach from home if they volunteer to teach more than twenty-two students who are learning remotely. You know, what, what matters most to me is that when teachers come to teach on the campus, that they are able to focus solely on the students they have in front of them without having to worry about also teaching the students who are watching them remotely from home. And I've heard from teachers who say they are willing to teach day and night, you know, as long as they're able to stay home and give their kids the opportunities, the opportunity to learn remotely. So this plan would give some of those teachers who don't qualify to teach from home, the opportunity to be, to be able to stay home. And I want to make it very clear that this would be an option at every campus or in every grade level. Again, the elementary grade levels, because it depends on the number of students who want to learn from home and the number of students who want to learn at the, on campus. So it would, it would, it would just depend. Some campuses may not be able to use it. So I wanted to get the waiver approved today. So when I, I, when I bring this idea to the new normal task force or the campus principals or, you know, this option would already be available. You know, however, since some people may have a harder time understanding what this plan actually includes, you know, I'm going to pull this item from the agenda until I have a chance to explain it more in detail to the different stakeholders. Again, these aren't normal times. If we all say, if we all say that safety is our number one priority, then, then our actions need to show that. Nobody wants to be the district or the superintendent that has a student employee, you know, pass away from, from COVID nineteen when they come back to school. So I would want to give teachers the flexibility to team with another teacher or all teachers in a grade level. For example, we're going to be having to get creative to work it out to where a teacher going inside a school building and potentially risking their life and the life of the own children, of their own children, that they have the ability to teach in a normal school setting where they can concentrate on their own safety and the safety of their students without having to teach another ten students who are learning from home remotely. So the only way that that can happen is that if they team up and the teachers who volunteer to work from home take on more than twenty-two students. So, you know, I'll pull it and discuss it more in detail with our, with our stakeholders.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. On to item four D, question and possible action to support request for minor boundary modification of foreign trade zone number sixty-eight within district boundaries. Mr. Blanco?
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. At our last meeting, this matter was first brought up. It was a request from the city of El Paso, the airport authority, actually, and who handles the foreign trade zone issues. Again, those are warehousing operations that are in designated areas to allow the businesses that are operating warehouse functions to hold product and goods that are in transit for shipment so that those products or goods are not subject to certain inventory taxes. It does not affect the, for the school district. One question that was asked by one of the trustees, Mr. Mena, a very good question was whether or not this work and warehousing involve hazardous materials or substances. And we checked with the city of El Paso with Mr. Panko. He confirmed that this operation does not transport or store hazardous materials at that warehouse. So that's been cleared up. And the city is still asking for the position of the school district to support the minor boundary adjustment. What this would do would be to include that location within the district as part of the foreign trade zone number sixty-eight to allow for those warehousing functions to go on an inventory tax-free modified basis. So we're, we support that.
Mr. Geta, did you have a question?
I said, so.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? I will call for the vote. Mr. Morales? Mr. Genna?
Hi.
Mr. Gondola?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
I'm staying.
Mr. Mena? Mr. Mena?
Hi.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you all for joining us this evening. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is six forty-eight.